We're good.
Good evening, welcome to the regular Planning Commission Grand Blank Township.
Hello.
Delores.
What's the date today? Is it the?
August 8th.
August 8th, yep.
August 8th, 2024. Please rise as we have another member joining us. The Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, members present this evening, we have Ms. Coulter, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Yoncho, Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Bush. We have Jeremy Smith, our Planning Zoning Director. And we have Andy Amot.
Amot, yep.
Our planning consultant here. So, the next item on our agenda is public comment opportunity, and there is no one present. So, I guess we will not have public comment this evening. Next would be approval of the minutes.
You need to close public comment. Open and close.
Open and close, okay. We will open the public comment if anybody's hiding.
Second. Don't you have to?
No.
Do we have to vote for that? No. All right, good.
All right, we'll close it. It doesn't look like anybody's here. Move on to approval of the minutes from July 11th, 2024. Mr. Secretary.
I've read the minutes as they're presented to you, and unless anybody has any changes, I would make a motion for approval of the minutes.
Second.
As presented.
Approval or motion for approval of the minutes as presented for July 11th. Support by Mr. Hoffman. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes six to zero. Next would be approval of this evening's agenda. Any changes?
So moved.
Word.
Motion by Mr. Hoffman to approve this evening's agenda as presented. Support by Mr. Bush. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye.
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 Motion passes six to zero. Correspondence, I didn't see any.
None.
Old business done this evening, new business election of officers. So, that would be for Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
So, we want to start with our Secretary. Are you still interested, Mr. Yoncho?
I am.
Is there anyone else?
But I have to ask a question.
Sure.
If I'm elected to the Township Board.
We'll change it.
Change it.
Yep. We'll make sure everything gets moved around for you.
Okay. Because I'm hoping to be, that I might be the Board Representative on the Planning Commission, but that may not allow me to be the Secretary.
We'll have a modification of officers if that, if and when that comes to be.
Mr. Bush had a.
I was just going to say, if there's nobody else that wants to do the positions, I would say we continue as it is currently and continue on with the same people. And I would make that motion, unless anybody else has anything else to say.
Other discussion?
With that, I'll support Mr. Bush's motion.
So, the motion by Mr. Bush to have Mr. Yoncho remain in office for the next term. Support by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That was kind of for everybody.
That was a group.
That was a group thing, but.
I think that included you too.
The opinion.
Oh. I just approved my own?
I didn't.
Okay, I thought we had to do them individually. Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
You don't have. We don't have to. No. If the motion was for all, then for all.
A slate was asked to be approved.
Yes, okay.
And it was seconded.
I misunderstood that. I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
So, I'm okay with that.
Support.
New.
Do you want to continue as President?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Chairman. Chairman, sorry. Okay, I'm okay with that.
Good.
Yes, thank you.
You guys are, that's.
Yeah.
So, in case 674, Public Hearing Landscape Planning and Species Best Practices.
You remember at our last meeting, we kind of picked this apart, and Mr. Yoncho, myself and Andy have brought before you a much more detailed and much more information that will be included in the ordinance as opposed to having, we had the discussion of the standalone list for the trees and plantings. So, this is all integrated within the book. And I'll turn it over to Andy, and Mr. Yoncho can fill in.
Yep, so I've made those corrections that Planning Commission wanted from last meeting. So, we have the big exhaustive list of permitted deciduous campy trees, permitted evergreen trees, permitted narrow evergreens, trees permitted only in certain circumstances, prohibited trees, and then we also have the little provision for alternative permitted trees where Planning Commission may allow alternative tree species with the finding that it's recognized through the state or a state university as an appropriate tree in the state of Michigan. Just giving people a little bit more freedom to provide something else that might not be covered on the list. Commissioner Yoncho had the good idea to do the botanical name alphabetically to even help people out a little bit more, so that was helpful. We added the little provision about, where was it? Oh, yeah, about the temporary snow fencing being required around the drip line during, so that construction vehicle equipment or soil compaction or grade changes aren't taking place within that drip line. They're surrounded by the, the tree's going to be surrounded by that snow fence. We added the automatic irrigation standard, and we changed the example tree detail to one that Commissioner Yoncho says is a best practice, a good way to plant a healthy tree.
Do we, this is, I just wanted for clarification. Looks like we have two details now, one on page nine, one at the top of page 10, and the one at the bottom of page 10 has been struck. Is that correct?
Yep, yep, the bottom one, the very last one, the third one on page 10, that one's struck with that red line through it.
Yep.
So, you have a deciduous detail on page nine, and then a evergreen detail on page 10, one for each page.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. The very last sentence starts at the bottom of page 10 and page 11. I'm having trouble understanding what that means and what you're getting at in that.
Yeah, I think there was confusion last meeting on that too briefly. I think that's a good question. The, so it's that, it's that sentence that says green belts along public street frontage as described in section 510-2 and required trees within parking lots, section 510-5 are provided. That doesn't really sound like a very complete sentence, but when you line it up with the context of, which I, which we probably could have provided of 629 standards for reviewing site plans, the, the, pretty much what that first sentence is just trying to say is that there simply are green belts along public street frontage and required trees within parking lots provided as a site plan review standard.
Actually, the very last sentence, the one that says the Planning Commission may consider soil type site conditions in construction preparation, et cetera. I just.
Yeah, so that, I think Commissioner Yoncho might be able to describe that a little bit better, is that if he sees in a detailed, like, site removal plan or site grading plan that they are grading in a place too close to a stand of trees, or too close to a forest, or too close to existing trees, Commissioner Yoncho does have some concerns about when you don't grade properly, you actually affect the existing trees on site. There's a way maybe Commissioner Yoncho could describe that, that would be helpful.
Thank you. I think that as grading occurs and site balancing occurs on a given site and soil changes occur, and also we have flood plains, we have drainage aspects and so on, that there may be some consideration that the Planning Commission may give to different plant materials and different planting conditions that might be appropriate for those conditions. Many plants have requirements that are not specific to geography or necessarily elevation, to drainage patterns, to other influences that affect the planting conditions. And so, I hope that, I won't be here forever, I know that.
Chairman, for Mr. Yoncho, that basically, I think what you're trying to get is that gives us, gives you as a Planning Commission the ability to, let's just say, a pine is on the plan, and you can say, I don't think that's going to work there because of the soil type, right? Is that kind of what this is falling into too?
Yes, but also in this document, it gives reference to the Department of Agriculture and Michigan State University and so on to weigh in, so that any Planning Commission member or administrator or planning consultant can access information from those specific organizations.
So, this is like our catch-all safety net, is what you're saying?
Exactly.
Perfect.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also confused this last sentence, and for this reason, I first joined, you know, got on this Planning Commission because I sat on the other side of the Site Plan Review Meeting, and Grand Blank Township told me what I had to do. And, you know, over the years, and, you know, in fact recently, I see a lack of businesses coming to Grand Blank, whether they're restaurants, they're all going to Fenton. Jeremy and I had that discussion a couple of weeks ago, and why is that? Are we being too restrictive? I mean, we can't even get a restaurant. To me, this statement right here says, we want more control, that I'm going to get a site plan from a developer who's had a landscape architect look at it, who has our ordinances, and then we're going to sit back and tell them what they're going to do? Again, I think this is way too restrictive, and we're overstepping our bounds, in my opinion.
To piggyback on that, if I could?
Mr. Hoffman?
I actually don't think that's the intent, but I agree with Mr. Bush that that's how it's going to be read and felt. I think this is more of a warning, because people don't want to necessarily build all this stuff and then see it fail, because it's going to cost them money at the end of it. So, I think this is more of a helpful in nature, but it's not going to be read that way, in my opinion. People are going to say, look, I've hired a professional. Let the professional tell me what I need to put in there into the guidances.
Mr. Chairman, I think, like I said, I think it's just a safety net for us, that if something goes awry, this is a catch-all. This, it says may consider, it doesn't say must consider. So, it's, you put it on there, and we'll take a look at it, and if, you know, Mr. Yoncho or I myself or any other Planning Commissioner sees something that doesn't look right, or we want to put something on there, we can recommend another species or another type or a different location for trees. I don't think it's a restrictive, I can see where it can be misconstrued that way, but that's not how it's going to be used.
I would think that this situation would be a rarity, correct?
100%. Yeah.
So, it's kind of, and if I may just piggyback too, it's kind of like, let's say, nine, standard nine C of the Site Plan Review Standards. The last sentence of that says, proposed architecture shall complement the character of the surrounding area. I mean, that's a, that's a standard that you use in maybe a really egregious circumstance because you're not going to play, because there is some discretion and subjectivity in a way to it, that you're not going to pull that out of your pocket every review, but in a crazy architectural facade that does not complement any of the character for blocks, maybe that's when you pull it up.
I do remember one instance where we talked to an applicant, they ended up leaving. So, where we said, hey, this doesn't match.
So, you've used it like once, maybe.
That I remember, yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Hoffman.
I also think this verges on the idea that we will then be responsible also if we point out something that's not going to work, and then they do something else that we, I just, I kind of would like to keep this to the experts, and we're not the experts.
Yeah. And again, that's, it's a may consider, not a must consider, so that's a fail-safe at the end. It's not, like Andy said, it's not going to be used every time. In the rare instance that it needs to be there, it's better to have it and not need it than need it and not have it.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, if I may, speaking to the city of Fenton, I worked with a company that was building a 14,000 square foot facility in the city of Fenton. It was a car dealership. They had to have an extra large parking lot to accommodate that type of business, of course, and I can promise you, the city of Fenton was indeed involved, and they told us how many islands we needed to have and how many trees per island, and trees shielding us from the main road and so forth. We had to get some variances, because obviously the number of trees they wanted wouldn't work with the inventory of cars that had to be accommodated there. So, the city of Fenton is doing very similar things with this.
Mr. Yoncho?
I look at this as more of an instructive and educational document that helps developers plant trees in such a way that they will survive, that they don't have to replace them, so that our community is, has the longevity of these trees, the growth of these trees, the maturity of these trees as a benefit to not only the residents, the developer, but also to the greater community. If you drive through Warwick Hills, I mean, the tree canopy is outstanding. If you drive through more recent developments of the past 30 or 40 years, that's not the case. And in many instances, it's because the wrong trees were planted, the wrong soils were used, the wrong, they were planted incorrectly, and so those trees have been replaced and replaced and replaced. And so, they, by replacement, they conform to the site plan. But what good does that replacement of trees do for our community? We don't achieve the maturity of the trees like we do and see in some of our older established communities.
Mr. Bush?
Just one more comment, and first I want to thank Mike and everybody for doing this, because I know that intentions are all good. The other issue I had, and again, it kind of piggybacks on, we're requiring more stuff, and that's section five about the irrigation. So, if someone does decide to have irrigations, now here again, we're going to require them to have rain sensors. More, more requirements for the developers, and I just don't think that's the way we need to be.
Mr. Yoncho?
I think that those rain sensor and moisture sensor devices are relatively cheap, but they will, in the long run, benefit the developer and the owners.
I agree. No, I agree. Absolutely agree, but I don't like the fact that we continue to require more and more and more, and then we see no development going on in this community.
Well, I think we see plenty of development. I don't think this will stop any development. When you talk about, you know, Fenton and other communities, I think a lot of that is due to other conditions that affect our greater community.
Mr. Smith?
I don't know on how many site plans that I've seen lately where anybody's even put in irrigation. Most people don't.
Exactly.
So, if, if they want to put it in, they can. If they don't, they don't, and nine times out of 10, they're not. But I understand your point of over-regulating, but we also don't want oversaturating, because we also have issues with stormwater in Grand Blank Township. So, if it's raining, and it's been raining, and their sprinklers are still going, or their irrigation's still going, they're just adding to the problem. So, I mean, I, I don't have any heartburn over it, but I know that, like I said, nine times out of 10, they're not putting in irrigation anyways. The end of the day, their ultimate response with whatever's on that, that site plan, that landscape plan, if it dies, it dies. They have, they have, I think it's six months to replace it or nine months to replace it, whatever the standard is in the book, and that it has to be replaced, so.
Ms. Coulter, you started this whole thing by asking a question. Your thoughts after hearing all these?
I guess, I mean, I'm still having problems with that very last sentence, and I guess my question is, if we did, if we delete that, is it really going to make any difference? I mean, we have a, all the previous provisions are very specific. I mean, some people think overly specific, but then this very last sentence seems to say, well, maybe, you know, we can consider some other things as well in enforcing the ordinance, so that's kind of where I'm at.
Mr. Hoffman?
I will say that, and we might not want to hear this, but the reason why businesses are building in other communities is the disposable income around us on what it is. You talk to anybody who's looking to build a restaurant or a shopping center or things of that nature, they're looking for where they can do that with the largest disposable income in a concentrated area. So, it's both the how many people and how deep it is. I don't think one of these would do that. But, yeah, I, I just see that line as a, as a, that's the professional's job to do. You know, maybe it's started of, you know, make sure that they're aware of the soil. I don't know what it is, but I don't think it's going to necessarily stop somebody from building here. But I am on the line of, with Mr. Bush of, I'm not trying to make this a cakewalk to be here, because sadly, over the years, the reason why our books and laws are this thick is because somebody has done the wrong thing, and we're trying to actually protect the people that actually live here and actually do business here. So, I don't see this one thing. I think it's more of the general idea of constantly adding stuff to have people do it. And again, I'll congratulate on the, the main theory of it is to help. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I get it. It's just people are going to look at it as another government telling me what.
Development. Mr. Yoncho?
Well, this does not apply to a person at their home or at their residence. This applies to new developments coming in and how we may regulate what they do, and in reality, this is like less than 1% of their cost of development, but it may, in the long term, be 10 or 20% of how our community is envisioned or perceived in the future. If we have mature trees, and I'll once again draw us back to a drive through Warwick Hills with large canopy trees, that's an outstanding place to live, and it's not because those are necessarily the mansions that we see around our community, it's because of the neighborhood, and the neighborhood is in great respect of the landscapes that those trees present.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, first of all, Mr. Hoffman, I appreciate your comments on that. I was, I was thinking of the same type of scenarios. I want to make sure that the sentence that Delores was referring to is understood 15, 20 years from now when Jeremy retires, new director, new boards, maybe get a better job, maybe leave a year from now, I don't know. But I want to make sure, I want to make sure that's clear enough for everybody understands it in the future. So, I don't know if there's a way to fine-tune anymore. I understood it, but apparently not everybody reads it the same way. So, I don't know if there's a way to better fine-tune the language. I completely agree with the statement that it's making.
If I may, like everything we've done since we've updated the master plan and we've done all these amendments, it can be changed.
Okay.
If something doesn't work out, or something, you know, site plan review or site plan, something goes awry, we can modify this in the future, and we could put a temporary hold on whatever site plan, if they ever had pause for concern and thought that that was overbearing, and then we could interpret or modify at that time. I'd like every, a few of you are saying, I don't think that line's going to hold people up from developing, so.
Then one, one more comment to the, Mr. Hoffman and the rest of us too. I think what we've done over the past several meetings, as we've discussed, this is actually kind of make a lot of clarification, and we're going to reduce the thickness of that binder with what we're doing. We're actually, what we're doing is in the long term, going to clean up a whole bunch of that. We're not adding to it. We're rephrasing, cleaning it up, rewriting it. That's my opinion.
Mr. Hoffman?
Saying the same thing shorter doesn't alleviate the number of things that they have to go through. So, when I say thicker, I mean the number of things. Is this going to public comic next, or?
This will go to the, if it'll recommend to the Township Board.
I'd like to recommend this go to the board for them to recommend, to approve this.
Oh, we need to open a public hearing.
I just asked that. I just asked.
Oh, that was your question, okay. Sorry.
Any other discussion before we move in that direction? All right. Hearing none, we will open a public hearing for zoning case 674 for any comments on a landscape planning and species best practices. Anyone that would like to comment? Seeing none, we will close the public comment, bring it back up to the Planning Commission. Mr. Hoffman?
I'd like to move to recommend to the board the approval of the ordinance amendments that we are doing. I'm trying to, oh, zoning case 674.
Motion by Mr. Hoffman to send this up to the board for their approval, support by Mr. Anderson. Any other comments? If not, a vote would be in order.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coulter? We're going to, we're going to vote.
My job.
I will.
What's that?
No.
Are we voting?
Yes.
We're going to vote, and we're going to do it by roll call.
Okay, I vote yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Yoncho?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
No.
Mr. Gellings votes yes. It passes by five to one. Okay, next item is committee reports. Anyone have a report?
Committee, committee reports? Uh, nothing, no, nothing. I was just trying to think if there was anything else that, we may or may not have a meeting next month. I don't have any site plans in waiting, so you all might get a, get off.
We did have a site plan review last week.
Two, was it last week or two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago. Before.
No, we didn't have a full, we didn't have a full site plan. If you want to, you want me to do it?
You're the boss.
Okay, I was just, okay. Juxicrenis on Tri Park is doing another, this one will be mini storage, so it'll be similar to what he already has on Reed Road across the street from Tri Park, but this will just be strictly mini storage, but there'll be larger units. will just be strictly mini storage, but there'll be larger units. There will be no water and sewer into the site, so there will be no businesses within these units, so it'll be simply for storage. No outdoor storage, indoor only.
No bit millings for the driveway, it's going to be a real asphalt driveway this time, too.
Yep.
So, we approved that for the administrator to make any?
Yes.
Approve any changes?
He's already submitted to county for approvals, we're just waiting on those to come back. We expect him in another month or so, we'll have everything and should be finalized here fairly quickly. It's a fairly simple site plan, so.
Anything from zoning board of appeals?
We haven't had a ZBA in a couple of months. We had one for adult foster care on Spinning Wheel a couple of months ago. That passed, they met all the requirements as of July 31st, so they're, they're operating now.
I've heard scuttlebutt regarding the Rite Aid on Hill and Dort about a retail establishment having to do with Halloween decor or something, is there anything to that?
Yes, they will be using that as a temporary use from the end of August until the beginning of November, it'll be a spirit Halloween temporary use. They're going to have temporary, permanent temporary signing, if you will. It won't be banners, it'll be corrugated, so it won't be, it won't look cheaply, but it's a retailer retail, so it's an approved use. They're not changing anything, they're not, they're basically moving in for a couple of months and then moving right back out.
Just as a resident, you know, we've got these supposedly, they're closed pharmacies in our, in our community. You know, I don't know, it's not our obligation or our duty to try to fill those vacancies, but gosh, you know, in the summer and the winter, there are some apparent needs in our community for recreation, for the young people in our community. Has any thought been given?
I mean, if somebody brings something forward to me, I can't make people bring me site plans, if somebody brings something to me, everything will be looked at heavily. Just so you know, I have, I'm in talks with both owners of both sites, both Rite Aids, the one on Hill Road and the one on Dort. They are actively looking for new tenants, and there are some tenants potentially in the wings, but nothing is definite yet, so I don't have anything for anybody yet, but there's, they were also looking at gas stations, and that's why, you know, part of the reason why we put moratorium. The township board did, I don't know if everybody was here for that, the township board approved a six-month moratorium on gas stations, the research to see if there needs to be more requirements on gas stations, specifically distances. We do that with used car lots, it's either 500 or 1,000 feet, you can't have the same use within that, that distance. So, I'm thinking that may be something similar that the township board may want all of you to look at, once we figure out, Jill and Andy are working on that right now, should have something in the next month or so regarding that, and we'll bring the findings to you folks and let you know what, what they find.
We've got a similar thing, don't we, between like places that can sell liquor and churches?
I think liquor stores have a distance requirement too, yep, from schools and churches, I believe.
Several other uses have distance requirements.
Used car lot one was just the first one that came to mind, that there's, there's a handful in the book that have the same thing, yes.
Anything else under committee reports? Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
Support, our first motion.
Motion by Mr. Hoffman.
Support to adjourn, 7:34 PM.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Hoffman, support by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Seven, 7:35 now.
Thank you, everybody.